Right into item number nine, which is public comment on items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. I see we have quite a crowd here, and I would like you, if you haven't already, to fill out some speaker cards so that I can call you up one by one.
Speaker cards?
Yes. Our first speaker, Tina Chen. Just tell us your name and your street. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tina Chen. I'm Secretary Treasurer of Unite Here Local Two. So I'm here today because today is International Women's Day. And I'm an immigrant, and I came from China. And I did a different job with the non-union company before I got a job at the Hilton Hotel, which is a union job. And as a former room cleaner, and I know how hard, you know, the woman's job in the hotel. So, and also I know how important to have a union job for the immigrant too. So I compare the place I work with the non-union and with the union, and I know it's a good pay, good benefit with the union job is guarantee your family. And also, you know, the fair workload is important. The woman is not only one for earning money, bring home, and also they need to work at home to support their family and children. So, you know, fair workload is important, and for the woman who have after work to go home, able to take care of their family. And the most important one is kind of have a voice at working place. So that's the most important, the union job. And I'm here as you to honor women's worker by guarantee that worker at the Crossing this area have a right to be fair process to organize. And you will hear from the other woman tonight, and we urging you to take their story into account in your negotiation with OTO. Thank you.
Thank you.[174.48][174.48][applause] Next speaker is Angie Ortiz. Angie Ortiz? Is Angie here? Okay. Molly Gomez?
Hi, my name is Molly Gomez, and I'm sick, sorry for the voice. I've worked in the restaurant business for over forty years, and I currently work in a union job at SFO. And I want to tell you that there's a huge difference between union jobs for women and non-union jobs. I have worked in non-union restaurants. They require me to work the lunch shift and then come back for the dinner shift with no pay in between. Worse than that is the issue of sexual harassment in non-union restaurants. I worked at a primary restaurant called Gulliver's that required me to wear a costume and introduce myself as a serving wench. You can imagine what type of harassment that led to. I also worked in a restaurant in Foster City where the owner slash manager put his hand on me where it didn't belong. These were not strip clubs, these were nice restaurants. These were non-union restaurants. I'm speaking to you on International Women's Day to let you know that union jobs protect women from sexual harassment and other injustices in the workplace. Please consider this in your negotiations with the Crossing Hotel with OTO. Thank you.
Thank you.[279.52][279.52][applause] Next is Annalyn Huerta.
Good evening, San Bruno City Council members. My name is Annalyn Huerta. I am eight years old and a third grader at Los Ritos Elementary. I am here with my mom and her friends tonight. Since today is International Women's Day, I wanted to support her and tell her how proud I am that she is my mom. She is not just my mom, she's my teacher and my best friend. She has encouraged me to join Girl Scouts, knowing that it will help me to be a leader, build confidence in character, and take action in my community by helping others. She became a Girl Scout troop leader so that she can make sure my troop was doing activities that helped us to develop skills that will last a lifetime. Tonight, my mom and her friends are here to show you that they care about this community and what happens here.
Thank you.[362.44][362.44][applause] Next is Priscilla Parasuerta.
Good evening, San Bruno City Council members. My name is Priscilla Parasuerta, and I'm here as a proud member of Local Two. You just heard from my daughter, Annalyn. I'm so pleased that she was brave enough to come and talk in front of you all. It's true that I've tried to raise her to be a confident young girl and know her importance. I haven't done this alone. I'm fortunate enough to have a partner in life, my husband and father to our two children. Being able to provide for our family is important, and we both work hard to do this. As a mom, I think about the future and possibilities, always visualizing the what-ifs of life. I'm confident that if I had to do it alone, I would be able to maintain our household and continue to care for my children financially and provide them with medical benefits. My union job pays well, provides medical, dental, and vision insurance. I have ten paid holidays a year, including Mother's Day, ample sick time, paid vacation, and the stability and support of my union. This allows me to take time off, spend it with my family, nurture them, knowing that my job encourages me to cultivate these relationships. In fact, there was a time when my son was being bullied. I remember being at work when I got the call from the principal. Upon reaching the school, my son was visibly upset. He was in fetal position and not verbally responsive. It was very stressful for me, knowing that my son needed me and he was hurting, and my need to be there for him, yet knowing that I needed to work to provide for my family. But because the union contract includes PTO days, my employer let me use a few to go to the school, stay with him, observe him until he felt safe. This showed me the commitment of my union and my employer, that my family was important. I was able to take this time off, knowing my job was secure, and there wouldn't be any repercussions. Having the protection of the union assures me that I never have to choose between my family and my job. This community needs to look to the future and ensure that my children and future generations can work, live, provide, and enjoy their lives by continuing to create jobs that benefit this community. I'm a proud Local Two union member.
Thank you.[502.36][502.36][applause] Next speaker is Beatrice Johnston.
Good evening, my city council members, I voted for you. My name is Beatrice Johnston, and I'm a longtime resident of San Bruno, Shelter Creek. When I heard that the city council was making a deal with an out-of-state company to bring low-wage jobs to San Bruno, I was really concerned. I really was. I know that the city calls itself a city with a heart, but where's the heart in creating minimum wage jobs when a studio rents for $2,000 in San Bruno? Where's the heart in creating backbreaking work that housekeepers do if there's no health insurance to help them, to cover their medical expenses, the pain that they work with? And where's the heart in creating jobs for women without any seniority to protect them from sexual harassment by their managers? Where's the heart in that? Now, I choose to believe that you have a heart, but I wonder if what's missing is the will to do the right thing. And I think we should think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.[589.36][589.36][applause] The next speaker is Karo Calvo.
I'll be translating for Carol.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Karo Calvo.
Hello, good night, my name is Karo Calvo.
He vivi en San Bruno por cinco años y trabajé en un hotel Fairfield Marriott que quedé en Milburn por cuatro años.
I've lived in San Bruno for the past five years, and I've worked at the Fairfield Marriott in Milburn for four years.
El trabajo era muy duro y cuando yo empecé a trabajar ganábamos el mínimo de 850 y después de dos años nos subieron a 950.
When I started working at this hotel, we were making a minimum of 850, and after two years, they only increased to 950 an hour.
Muchas veces no nos alcanzaba el dinero para la renta y tenía que usar todo mi paycheck.
Many times, this wasn't enough for us to afford living here, so we would have to use, I would have to use my entire paycheck.
Limpiamos dieciséis cuartos, no teníamos beneficios, no vacaciones, no días de enfermedad y no pensión.
We, we used to clean sixteen rooms a day. We had no benefits, no vacation, no sick days, no pensions.
Teníamos miedo de hablar sobre nuestros derechos, por esa razón tuve que dejar mi trabajo y conseguir un mejor trabajo en comunidad.
We were always afraid to talk about our rights and speak about our rights, and for this reason, I, I had to leave this job and try to find a better job, and I found a union job.
Sin miedo a que nos, sin miedo a que nos hagan, sin miedo a que nos den cuando quieran. Las mujeres de San Bruno y nuestra comunidad merece tener un mejor trabajo y dignos. Estamos aquí para pedirles que hagan lo correcto.
The women of San Bruno and our community deserve to have good jobs. For this reason, we're here to ask you to do the right thing.
Thank you.[755.80][755.80][applause] Candy Hu.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Candy. I work at a hotel as a housekeeper. I want to tell you a little bit about what housekeeping looks like. Every day, I clean thirteen to fourteen rooms. I make more than twenty baths and change over more than sixty puros. I clean the whole room and the bathroom. The hardest, the hardest part of my job is cleaning the glass showers. In order to clean the glass shower properly, I have to scrape two doors up and down, on both sides, which means about eight tons per shower, so I feel pain all over my shoulder down to my back. I used to work at a hotel that made me clean thirteen checkout rooms every day. A checkout room mean that the guests stay for a day or couple of days and leave a lot of garbage and mess. Checkout rooms are really hot and take a long time. I have to rush and finish all the jobs. After clean thirteen rooms, I would go home exhausted, and I have to take a nap before I could make a dinner for my family. Working at a strong union hotel have make a different, huge difference in my life. At my hotel now, I never clean more than ten checkout room in a day, usually less than that. This mean I go home with my family have energy and feel happy to stay with my family. The union makes sure my job is fair and doesn't hurt my body. I'm sharing my story tonight to urge you to do the right thing for housekeeper at the Crossing Hotel, so they can have protection same I have it. Thank you.
Thank you.[913.92][913.92][applause] Sister Cheryl Marshall.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say two quick things. First of all, I'm not a union member. I work at St. Roberts. One thing I, I am very aware of is when some of us who are older in this room were growing up, it was often thought that a woman's job was a supplemental amount of money that went into her family, and obviously, in this day and age, that's not the case anymore. With many single women, with some single parents, people whose husbands may or may not make a sufficient salary, the women who are working obviously are necessary in terms of helping to support the family. The other thing I just want to say is all of you who live in San Bruno know what a wonderful place it is. I'm one of the newcomers, I've only, this is my third year living here, but it's my fourteenth or fifteenth year working here. And the people in this town are wonderful, so I would hope that if the hotel does come to pass, that people would get paid enough so that they could work here and also live here in this city that we all love so much. That's my hope. Thank you.
Thank you.[1012.64][1012.64][applause] Renee Morales.
Good evening. I'm here today because I wanted to take the time to address the city council over the new development of the hotel that is coming to our town. I want to do, let everyone know in the room that this is the most generous council. They do love San Bruno, and I appreciate them greatly. I do believe that they will make the right decision. With that being said, it's always hard to make a decision, it's always hard to put pressure on a new company or, or an individual who don't always want or see the light to do what is right. Living here in San Bruno is expensive, and we all know this, and having the backing and the support of a union can only enhance the vibrance of the city, because it becomes strong and become united. So I do employ that the city does back the union and ask this hotel that's coming to our community to give fair wages and consider living in San Bruno, and living in San Bruno is a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you.[1093.44][1093.44][applause] Jim Stansberry.
Bit of a different subject. My name's Jim Stansberry. I'm the executive director of Project Ninety, which supplies substance abuse treatment in the county, including all of the cities and, and the citizens thereof. With, you know, development, after thirty-something years, we're losing our facility. This has been in the process for the last period of time. We'll make adjustments, but part of it is my coming to the board is to make you first of all aware of that this will eliminate about one quarter of the substance abuse residential treatments. The present time, there's more people applying than at any time that I've been around, and that's forty-something years in doing this. People are dying getting, waiting to get into substance abuse, those that are on our waiting list. So the situation is dire. Parts of what we'd like, or I'd like is just, you know, your support. The county, it's, it's one where the county takes care of it, and the county does as good a job as any county that I'm aware of. However, as has been mentioned, just the housing costs, the cost of, of property and the situation within the county has made it to where very likely, up until this point, in three or four months, there will be this lessening of services that are available. You know, it's not, it's not only critical for the people who are getting the services that, you know, over the period of years, I see all kinds of people who have made the adjustment and are now clean and sober, working, paying taxes. And it affects not only themselves, but their families and the next generation. We've been losing the war on substance abuse, and unless the elders are cured or assisted, then the new ones coming up are going to find themselves at risk. The reduction of whether it be drunk driving, domestic violence, homelessness is the effect of not taking care of the treatment. So what I would ask is, is that both that you be supportive of us, if, if you have any influence with the supervisors, who I know are aware of the problem and are doing what they can, however, the machinery works slow. And, you know, at a very soon period, a very near period of time, that there will be less services. And all of the particularly larger cities, of which San Bruno is one, is continually having your citizens that are needing the assistance, and that's going to be reduced. Anyway, thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you.[1280.04][1280.04][applause] Mary Isensei? Hope I said that right.
Close enough. My name is Mary Isensei, and I've worked at the Hyatt Hotel in Burlington for twenty-five years. I've also lived and raised my family here. Recently, my, recently, my hotel closed for an eighty million dollar renovation. With Local Two, with Local Two, I would not be standing here. My coworkers and I had the opportunity to go in and negotiate to continue our much-needed healthcare during this closure. That allowed me to continue much-needed medical treatment for my back. I believe the workers at the Crossing Hotel should have the same rights as myself and coworkers. Thank you.
Thank you.[1329.92][1329.92][applause] Maria Flores.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maria Flores, and I'm here as a, representing my kids, and I'm just asking you tonight, make the best decision. Having a job with a union, it means a lot. I can request a day off for my kids, field trip, delect, eliminating time for them for tutoring. And three things for a union job is decent pay, health and welfare, vacation pay, and seniority. Thank you.
Thank you.[1390.96][1390.96][applause] We have a couple of speakers off-subject, but the last one on this particular subject would be Shelley Kessler.
I need a little tutoring now and again. Good evening, my name is Shelley Kessler. I'm the head of the San Mateo Labor Council, representing a hundred and ten unions here in the county. Some of you know that I've been there over thirty years, and I've had the distinct honor and pleasure of representing working people all over this county. We're here tonight because it's International Working Women's Day, International Women's Day. And I'm here to help call on the council to uphold workers' rights and women's rights as you continue to negotiate a final deal for the Crossing Hotel site. Now, a little bit of history, from the Lowell Mill to the Triangle Shirtwaist Factory to Mother Jones, Norma Ray, women have led the struggle to ensure that workers are treated with dignity and respect. We stand on their shoulders. I would imagine most of you in this room have had a mother, so you know what it is to have someone who will help raise you and teach you and train you and work on your behalf to make sure you have a decent life. The majority of the people who will work at the hotel are not only women, but women of color, who without the benefit of a union, would only make as little as eighteen thousand dollars a year and are vulnerable to the whims of management. You've heard a few examples this evening. But tonight, and going forward, you have an opportunity to do something about the Crossing Hotel that can provide for these women and their families. Today, we call on you to hold OTO development accountable, to guarantee the construction workers and hotel workers will have the right to a reasonable process to obtain fair wages in accounting with some of the highest costs of living in the nation, including a right to have a voice at work. Now, OTO has, in other environments, signed car check and neutrality, which all of you have heard from us about over the time of your tenure, when you've come to the Labor Council, to talk about some of the issues that are important to working people. We think that OTO could do that here in San Bruno. Now, history also teaches us that everyone who deserves, who works an honest day deserves decent wages and benefits. It also is necessary to hold those that have wealth and power to be held accountable, to guarantee a fair share for those who have earned those wages and have earned the profits and the benefits for those corporations. Now, you may not know this, but I have a theme song. If you're lucky, I'll sing it for you. But probably not. Don't look at me like that, Mayor Ruane, I'm not going to do it. But the song came out of the Triangle Shirtwaist Factory fire in New York, where a hundred and forty-six women died, because their, their doors were locked, they couldn't get out, they jumped to their deaths or burned up in the factory. But that song says, "No more the drudge and idler tend that toil where one reposes, but a sharing of life's glories, bread and roses, bread and roses." Tonight, and going forward, you have a chance to bake and grow those results. All of us deserve bread and roses, and I urge you to work on that behalf, to make sure that these people will have the benefits and the kind of life that they deserve. Thank you so much for your patience and your tolerance, and I hope going forward, you will take the admonitions from the people here in this room to heart. Thank you.
Thank you.[1632.24][1632.24][applause] Malcolm Robinson.
I've enjoyed that. That was very good. The issues that that fire caused have not gone away. The apparel industry just keeps moving the jobs overseas.
Speak right into that.
My name is Malcolm Robinson. I've lived twenty years now in Portola Highlands, seven years before that in Shelter Creek. I come to you today to ask the city council to take the lead to help residents of San Bruno stop the rash of burglaries that are going on in our city. It's getting out of hand. My house was burglarized on February first, and I was out of town at the time. I'm a recent retiree, so usually I'm around the house. And my wife came home, the shades were drawn, and she had to deal with the situation. The house was trashed, jewelry was stolen. We dodged a bullet, because burglars really don't know what to look for, they're nervous and just throwing things around the house, but we still lost about eight thousand dollars worth of, worth of jewelry mostly. And it's not just our house. In the last month, since February first, four houses in our block, Merced and Lake, have been burglarized or attempted burglaries have occurred. West of 280, in this year alone, there have been fifteen burglaries up in the hills, so Portola Highlands and the neighborhoods around it, and fifty-nine burglaries in the last year. And it's not just San Bruno. Apparently, they're going up and down the 280 corridor, so South City, I see heads nodding, you've heard this, this is happening. What's happening to me, and we need to do something, we just can't sit on our laurels. About twelve years ago, my wife and I left for a weekend, and I left the garage door open, and for three days, from Friday to Sunday, but all our neighbors, you know, looked out for us, and nothing was stolen, nobody entered the house, as far as we know. But times have changed, obviously. They jimmy'd the door, they came in, and it's, it's terrifying to my wife, she's really nervous. We've joined the Neighborhood Watch Group, we've met with the chief of police and Chief Barberi, and we, I'm trying to get statistics on this, put together a flyer to build a Neighborhood Watch Group in our area. It's hard to do. We get a little flyer, but really, this is not what you do when you go door to door to your friends and neighborhoods, friends and neighbors, and try to get some action going, right? So this is just the beginning, there's a lot of other work to do to be able to get ready to go to people's doors and knock and say, are you ready? There's a website called Next Door that you can sign up to, that we have, and through that, we've come in contact with a lot of people in our neighborhood. that, we've come in contact with a lot of people in our neighborhood, and there's a lot of nervous people out there. So we're asking for the city, our neighborhood is asking for the city council to take this issue head-on, to illuminate it as an issue, to provide resources and statistics so we can understand how big of an issue it is, to post signs in our neighborhood for neighborhood watch, to see more of a police presence. I always thought it was a quiet, out-of-the-way, fog-shrouded hill up there, and I don't see police patrols very regularly. As I said, I'm retired. I ride my bicycle around the hillside, I hike, and I know neighbors, and I go to water aerobics in Pacifica and stuff, so I'm outside a lot. So I asked the city council to take this as a serious issue and to take some action to help protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Rico.
I didn't write it out this time. Robert Rico, I'm your appointed representative on the mosquito board, and I wanted to thank the city for constantly running information on your webpage. There's been some concern about the pond at the old theater building. As I told city manager Jackson, the mosquito district and the property owner have been working together. Even though there's water there, it is being treated, it is being inspected very often, and should there be a need to treat it more or treat it differently, short of the property owner pumping the water out and then it fills back up, the, the district is taking all the proper steps. And I just wanted to let the, the residents here and listening or viewing know that the district and the city and the property owner are all working together to minimize any concerns.
Thank you, Robert. Good. All right. Anyone else under public comment? All right. And we do have a crowd here tonight, and I know you all really want to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you'd like to leave now, you're welcome to. We'll just take a quick break.
Thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you.